The City Commission meeting for August 22nd will come to order. City Clerk?
Mr. Abraham?
Here.
Mr. Gault? Mr. Rhodes?
Here.
Mr. Wilson?
Here.
Mayor Taylor?
Here. We have Tanner Hubbard here tonight, and he's going to help us with our Pledge of Allegiance. If you'll come on up, Tanner. Thank you for being here. I know this is part of your, one of your badges to be here. We appreciate you being here for us.
All right, there's a good.
To the flag of the United States of America and to its republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Well, we attended a nice retirement for Glenn Anderson, reception for him this afternoon. And Glenn has done an exemplary job as the Director-Chairman of the Paducah Waterworks. So, we wish him well in his retirement and look forward to having Bill Robertson there taking his place. He'll do a fine job also. Are there any additions or deletions?
There are none.
Commissioner Abraham, please.
I move that the readings of the minutes for August 12th, 2014, and August 19th, 2014, City Commission meetings be waived, and that the minutes of said meetings prepared by the City Clerk be approved as written.
Second.
City Clerk?
Mr. Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Taylor?
Aye. Okay, we have some appointments tonight. Whereas subject to the approval of the Board of Commissioners, I hereby appoint Paul Bradford as a member of the Paducah Planning Commission to replace Robert Manchester, who has resigned. This term will expire August 31st, 2018.
I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the action of Mayor Taylor in appointing Paul Bradford and reappointing Kathy Crisilius as members of the Paducah Planning Commission.
Second.
Sorry, I didn't read that right, Alan. Whereas subject to the approval of the Board of Commissioners, I hereby reappoint Kathy Crisilius as a member of the Paducah Planning Commission. This term will expire August 31st, 2018. So, since you've already read it, will that be okay? Good.
Sorry.
Right, City Clerk?
Mr. Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Taylor?
Aye. Whereas subject to the approval of the Board of Commissioners, I hereby appoint Jackie Smith and Paul Grumley to the Civic Beautification Board to replace Paula Bright and Andrea Higdon, who have resigned. These terms will expire July 1st, 2015.
I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the action of Mayor Taylor in appointing Jackie Smith and Paul Grumley as members of the Civic Beautification Board.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Taylor?
Aye. Whereas subject to the approval of the Board of Commissioners, I hereby reappoint Derwin Ursery and Thomas Whittamore as members of the Paducah Area Transit System Board. These terms will expire June 30th, 2018.
I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the actions of Mayor Taylor in reappointing Darwin Ursery and Thomas Whittamore as members of the Paducah Area Transit System Board.
Seconded.
City Clerk?
Mr. Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Taylor?
Aye.
Okay.
Commissioner Rhodes, please.
I move that the following documents be received and filed. Documents: Contract for Service with Uppertown Heritage Foundation; Agreeing for Professional Engineering Services with Bacon Farmer Workman Engineering and Testing Incorporated for the Riverfront Phase 1-B Project; Grant Administration between the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet Office of Highway Safety and the Paducah Police Department for the Heads Up, Don't Be Intoxicated Mini-Grant Program; Two-Year Renewal Agreement with Bluegrass Uniforms for Uniform Services; Transcendent Proceeding for the City of Paducah, Kentucky General Obligation Refunding Bonds, Series 2014A for $5,460,000.
Second.
City Clerk?
Mr. Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Taylor?
Aye. We'll go on to our resolution. Commissioner Wilson, please.
I move that a resolution entitled, "A Resolution of the City of Paducah, Kentucky Making Declaration of Official Intent With Respect to Reimbursement of Temporary Advances Made for Capital Expenditures to Be Made from Subsequent Borrowings," be adopted.
Second.
Jonathan?
Mayor Commissioners, basically, the purpose of this reimbursement resolution is to ensure compliance with the United States Government Treasury Regulations in declaring our intent to reimburse any advance cash capital outlays associated with the upcoming 2414-C debt issue. That's the showroom. Simply put, we make, if we make capital expenditures prior to having bond proceeds in hand, we can pay ourselves back. That's what this does, so we can get started rather quickly because the time is short for construction.
Okay.
Do you think it would be appropriate for us to also go ahead and talk about the ordinance that's gonna be read later in the meeting? I have Hal Sullivan and Mark Rawling here. Rawling's here to talk about, if you have any questions. Would it be okay to go ahead and talk about that because they're all kind of tied together? You want to wait? That'd be all right?
Think it'd be okay? Come on up.
Basically, I'll just summarize them, and then they can jump in, or you can come up, however you want to do it. As you know, we have a hotel coming to town, and as a part of the deal, the city agreed to loan a bond around $4 million. And the question that everybody asks is, how are we gonna pay for that? Well, the deal was cut such that the CVB will handle half a million of that, and the balance of that will be taken care, paid back to us over a period of about 11 to 12 years. And the way they will do it, they will have what they call a Kentucky Sales Tax Tourism Credit, and they'll pay that back to us over those years. And if that sales tax credit isn't sufficient to cover the debt service, then the hotel developers themselves will make up the difference. So, bottom line on that particular bond issue is that the taxpayers won't have to pay for any of it. It's all taken care by the developer and CVB. The second issue, now that's called the 2014D. The showroom is called the 2014C. And what, the reason they call them, 2014C and 2014D means this. That's the year, and this is actually, last summer, we floated two different bond issues of refinancing, 2014A, 2014B, 2014C, 2014D. So, most we've ever done in my career in one short period of time. That's why it's called that. There's nothing magical, other than there's codes. And so, that's, in a nutshell, what those two bond issues are for.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Members of the Commission. Just to give you a, kind of, an idea of the timeline, and John did a very good job of explaining everything that is going to take place. The current plan is that we will actually lock the rates in on the two new bond issues on September 18th. The bonds will then close on September 30th, and that's when you'll actually have your proceeds in hand. So, this reimbursement resolution that you're considering would actually allow you to spend money up until that 30th of September and then pay yourselves back for it. And the hotel bonds themselves will be taxable bonds because they are for private use, and the Series C bonds, the showrooms, those are tax-exempt bonds. Both will be paid back, as planned, over a 10-year period.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
We need to vote on that.
Okay. Vote on the resolution now?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Taylor?
Aye. Municipal Orders. Commissioner Abraham, please.
Upon the recommendation of the City Manager of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Paducah, order that the personnel changes on the attached list be approved.
Good evening, Mayor. Are there any questions?
Second, I'm sorry.
Okay. Steve? Thank you. Steve?
If there are any questions, it's all routine. There's 52 resignations, all summer, all the summer help is hitting mostly on this meeting cycle. One firefighter promotion and a bunch, as well, to a relief driver.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Mr. Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Taylor?
Aye. Commissioner Rhodes, please.
Okay. I move that a municipal order entitled, municipal order approving the advertisement for a bid and distribution of a preliminary official statement for the purchase of City of Paducah, Kentucky General Obligation Bonds, Series 2014C, and City of Paducah, Kentucky taxable general obligation bonds, Series 2014D, in aggregate principal amounts of approximately $2,415,000 and $4,325,000 respectively be adopted.
Any discussion?
No discussion over here.
City Clerk?
Mr. Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Taylor?
Aye. We'll go to our ordinances adoption. Commissioner Wilson, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance accepting grant funds through the Kentucky Heritage Council State Historic Preservation Office and National Park Service to be used to host a training event that includes the commission assistance and mentoring program, and authorizing the mayor to execute said grant agreement and all documents relating to same. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the City of Paducah hereby accepts grant funds in the amount of $6,300 from the Kentucky Heritage Council State Historic Preservation Office and National Park Service for a certified local government program grant to be used to host a training event that includes the commission assistance and mentoring program. This grant requires either a local cash match or in-kind services in the amount of $4,200. The city will provide a cash match, which will be appropriated in the city's planning department fiscal year 2015 budget.
Second.
City Clerk, please.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Taylor?
Aye. Commissioner Abraham, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance approving the final report of the Paducah Planning Commission on the proposed zoning change from R2 Low and Medium Density Residential Zone to R4 High Density Residential Zone for property located at 1139 and 1179 Lone Oak Road and 1121 Sanders Avenue, and amending the Paducah zoning ordinance so as to affect such rezoning. This ordinance is summarized as follows. Rezone property located at 1139 and 1179 Lone Oak Road and 1121 Sanders Avenue from R2 Low and Medium Density Residential Zone to R4 High Density Residential Zone, and amending the Paducah zoning ordinance to affect such rezoning.
Second.
Thank you. City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Taylor?
Commissioner Rhodes, please.
All right. Okay. I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance approving the final report of the Paducah Planning Commission on the proposed zoning change from R1 Low Density Residential Zone to MU Mixed Use Zone for property located at 2711 New Holt Road, and amending the Paducah zoning ordinance so as to affect such rezoning. This ordinance is summarized as follows. Rezone property at 2711 New Holt Road from R1 Low Density Residential Zone to MU Mixed Use Zone, and amending the Paducah zoning ordinance to affect such rezoning.
We've discussed all these before, so... City Clerk?
Mr. Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Taylor?
Aye. Commissioner Wilson, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance extending the boundary of the City of Paducah, Kentucky by finalizing the annexation of certain property lying adjacent to the corporate limits of the City of Paducah, and defining accurately the boundary of said property to be included within the said corporate limits. This ordinance is summarized as follows. Approving final annexation of attractive property contiguous to the present city limits located at 2711 New Holt Road, containing 0.7972 acres, more or less.
Seconded.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Taylor?
Aye. We'll go to ordinances introduction. Commissioner Abraham, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance of the City of Paducah approving an agreement with the Kentucky Department for Local Government to obtain a Community Development Block Grant Award on behalf of the Four Rivers Behavioral Health Center, Central Point Recovery Center, and authorizes the mayor to execute all documents relating to same. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the City of Paducah approves an agreement with Kentucky Department for Local Government to obtain a Community Development Block Grant Award on behalf of Four Rivers Behavioral Health Center Point Recovery Center in the amount of $250,000, with the city receiving $12,500 of said grant for administration. No local match is required. Further, the mayor is hereby authorized to execute all documents necessary to accept the grant award with the Kentucky Department of Local Government and authorize to execute the legally binding agreement with Four Rivers Behavioral Health for Center Point Recovery Center.
Second.
Hello, Steve?
Hello, good evening. This is the yearly CDPG allocation for Four Rivers Center. Certainly, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
No questions here?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Rhodes, please.
You've all been waiting for this. I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance of the City of Paducah, Kentucky authorizing the issuance of, one, City of Paducah, Kentucky General Obligation Bonds, Series 2014C, in the approximate aggregate principal of $2,415,000, subject to a permitted adjustment by increasing or decreasing the principal amount of the Series 2014C bonds by up to $240,000, for the purpose of financing a portion of the cost of constructing of a showroom at the Julian Carroll Convention Center, and, two, City Paducah, Kentucky taxable general obligation bonds, Series 2014D, in the approximate aggregate principal of $4,325,000, subject to a permitted adjustment increase or decreasing the principal amount of the Series 2014C bonds by up to $435,000, for the purpose of financing a portion of the cost of the acquisition, construction, installation, and equipping of an economic development project in the City of Paducah, Kentucky, authorizing and adopting a contract lease and option, subordinated leasehold mortgage, and sales tax refund pledge and security agreement between the City of Paducah, Kentucky and the Paducah Conventions Hotel LLC in connection with the issuance of the Series 2014D bonds. Approving the form of bonds, authorizing designated officers to execute and deliver the bonds, authorizing and directing the filing of notice within the state local debt officer, providing for the payment and security of the bonds, creating bond payment funds, maintaining the heretofore established sinking fund, authorizing acceptance of the bonds, bids of the bond purchases for the purchase of the bonds, and repeating inconsistent ordinances. This ordinance is summarized as follows. This ordinance is the issuance of general obligation bonds designated as 2014C in the approximate principal amount of $2,415,000, the Series 2014C bonds, and the Series 2014D in the approximate principal amount of $4,325,000, the Series 2014D bonds, and together with the 2014C bonds, the bonds, by the City of Paducah, the city. The bonds are to be issued for the purpose of financing a portion of the cost of construction of a showroom at the Julian Carroll Convention Center, the 2014C project, to a portion of the cost of the acquisition, construction, installation, and equipping of improvements at a hotel to be located adjacent to the Julian Carroll Convention Center and to be leased to Paducah Convention Hotel LLC, a Kentucky Limited Liability Corporation, the LSC, for use and furtherance of economic development within the city. The 2014D project, and together with the 2014C project, the projects. Provisions are made in the ordinance for the payment of the bonds and security thereof, for the application of proceeds of bonds, for the establishment of bond payment funds, for the maintenance of the previously established sinking fund, and for certain covenants of the city with respect to the bonds. The ordinance further authorizes the execution and delivery by the City of a lease agreement, a subordinated leasehold mortgage and security agreement, and a sales tax refund pledge and security agreement with the LSC in connection with the leasing to the LSC of the 2014D project. The bonds are to be sold at public competitive sale and shall mature or be subject to mandatory sinking fund redemption in varying amounts on number the first of each year's 2015 through 2025. The bonds pledge the full faith and credit of the city, and provisions made for the collecting of a tax to pay the principal of and interest on the bonds subject to certain credits as provided in Section 7 of the ordinance. As required by KRS 83.060, the following section of the ordinance is set forth in its entirety. Section 7, General Obligation. The bonds shall be full general obligations of the city, and for the payment of said bonds and interest thereon, the full faith and credit and revenue of the city are hereby pledged for the prompt payment thereof. During the period the bonds are outstanding, there shall be, and they're hereby is levied on all the taxable property in the city, in addition to all of the taxes without limitations to rate, a direct tax annually in the amount sufficient to pay the principal of and interest on the bonds, when and as due, it being hereby found and determined that tax, current tax rates are within all applicable limitations. Said tax shall be and is hereby ordered computed, certified, levied, and extended upon the tax duplicate, and collected by the same officers in the same manner and the same time as taxes for general purposes for each of the said years are certified, extended, and collected. Said tax will be placed before and in preference to all other items and for the full amount thereof provided, however, that in each year, to the extent that the other lawfully available funds of the city are available for payment of bonds, including the amounts available under the lease and are appropriate for such purpose, the amount of such direct tax upon all the taxable property in the city shall be reduced by the amounts of such other funds so available and appropriated.
Second.
Thank you, Alan. You did a good job.
Thank you.
We're just introducing these tonight. We do not vote on any of these. Commissioner Wilson, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance approving a pension increase to the eligible, oh, a newtens, a newshens, a newtens, under the Police and Firefighters Retirement Fund of the City of Paducah, Kentucky, as defined by KRS 958.59. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the City Commission authorizes the Finance Director to provide funds sufficient to cover the cost of a one-time only 2% pension adjustment in the amount of $212,000 for the eligible newtens under the Police and Firefighters Retirement Fund of the City of Paducah, Kentucky. Further, the Finance Director is hereby directed to transfer said non-recurring funds from the general funds, unreserved fund balance, to the Police and Firefighters Retirement Fund.
I thought I'd make a comment, just in talking to John Perkins about this. I think we read quite often, or hear in news media, about cities that don't do the right thing of their employees and underfund their pension, and don't take care of their pension liabilities. And I'm pretty happy to say that several years ago, the city bonded $5.9 million at a payment this year of some $498,000. And even though we had a little problem in the stock market of the Great Recession in '07, '08, and '09, we're not catching up and making, well, last year, we made a payment of $411,000. So, our city's been pretty darn responsible already, in that we spent last year $909,000 to keep this pension intact and fully funded. And I think that's, I think it's pretty remarkable. I'm not sure every city does as good a job as what we do. So, I just want to make that comment.
Is Jonathan here? Is that the, Jonathan, could you explain that a little bit further?
Commissioner Rhodes, you'll have to correct me where I'm wrong here. I don't have the numbers in front of me, but...
You gave me the numbers at lunch. You gave me the numbers at lunch, so...
Okay, we'll figure it out. 2006, the city borrowed riot $6 million, and the debt service on that for 20 years is $498,000. And we had to pay that for 20 years. The reason we borrowed that money at that time was to make the fund completely funded to zero. And as Commissioner said, recession came, values dropped substantially. Now, back in the '90s, we took the approach, policy-wise, that if there were ever going to be a raise, then we need to fully fund it. KRS also requires that if the unfunded liability goes up, or is in existence again, that we would have to take the position that we'd have to pay it off, almost like another bond issue. And we've been paying it off since the recession. And so, we'd be paying another 15 years, 20 years, to get that unfunded liability, which is created by the Great Recession, paid off again. So, that's why we actually have two, two different issues. One, we're paying off a bond issue that we floated in 2006 to bring the fund balance to zero from a negative position, to the $10,006 million. And then after the recession, the unfunded liability came back again, and we had to pay that back to zero again. And so, it takes time to, so that's where the 900, was it, Commissioner?
$109,000.
$109,000.
So, this year, that's the amount we already have coming out of fiscal year 2015 budget is...
2014.
2014 budget is just a little less than a million dollars.
Yes.
About $900 and something thousand, what you said.
Right. That was the year we just ended, in June. Now, the year we're in right now, it dropped down a little bit, didn't it?
It's 380, I think, for this budget year that we're just entering.
Plus the $498, yeah.
Right.
So, it's at 800, you've said, you told me it was 800, and it drops from $909,000 to $878,000 for 2015.
Right. And that's already...
That's to keep that fully funded.
Correct.
And...
On a trajectory to get us back to fully funded.
And it is only for a small group from years ago that were in a separate retirement program.
Correct.
It's nothing to do with our current firefighters or police officers.
That's correct.
It is the ones from years ago.
That's correct. We only have...
Stay in a different system?
Well, there's only, there's only one active firefighter that is still active that will go into that, that plan. We have about 60 people that are already retired. In the middle, and this is before my time, but what I've read, in the middle '80s, the state, I guess, made it, gave an opportunity to municipalities that had this police and fire pension fund. Most second-class cities have the same exact issue we've got. And at that time, about, you could no longer go into the old plan. You had to go to the state. And there were a number of folks that didn't elect to go to the state at that time. So, in like '89, '91, in that range, a lot of the firefighters and the police officers that were active, that had not yet retired, they were given the opportunity to migrate from the old pension plan into the state pension plan. And that's what they did. And so, when I started in '91, there were about 150 pensioners, not counting spouses, and now it's down to about 60, not counting spouses.
So, they had the option to go into the state fund?
Yes. If they weren't, if they weren't already retired, they could, yes.
But these people chose not to?
That's correct.
They chose to stay in a fund that would be funded by the city?
Correct. Now, you've got to be kind of careful on how I answer this. There were a number of people that were already retired, even in the '80s. They couldn't go to the state. They were already into this plan. But, yeah, it's a fact that there were probably 20, I can't remember exactly, 20 to 25 people that could have migrated into the state plan, chose not to, and they stayed with, and have since retired into the old plan.
And how many years would they have had to work for the city to be eligible to be in this program?
If, if they're not disabled, and they worked their full, the minimum number of years to retire, it's 20, 20 years.
So, they worked 20, they had to work 20 years for the city?
Yes.
To be in this fund?
Correct.
So, they may have pensions from other employment after that?
Right. It's conceivable that, so John, John Perkins was a police officer at 21. I could retire at 41, 42, and I'm a young guy, and so I can go on and do, become a city manager, or something else.
Work somewhere else for 20 to 25 years and have a retirement from that?
You sure?
The additional employment years of your life as well?
You could.[1756.54]
And they wouldn't have Social Security for during the time, the 20 years that they worked here, or they would?
They would not.
Would not have it for that 20 years in this fund?
No, but even on that, you've got to be careful because if I'm working for the city, I could also have a part-time job, and I could be contributing to Social Security. But through the city's plan, firefighters and police officers do not contribute to Social Security. They did not then, and they do not today.
They have the other retire, their state retirement.
That's correct. That's correct.
John, with respect to the state retirement plan that there was an option at that time, is not the city making the full contribution to that along with the employee, just as is the case with this pension?
Right.
There's not a distinction between the two in that respect. It's the city and the employees' responsibility to fund it?
No, you're talking about, ask me that question again. I don't, I want to answer this correctly.
This, this, the state retirement plan that was an option to this at one time, some chose to go one way, some chose to stay.
Right.
The state retirement plan is funded by whom?
State retirement plan would be funded by the city employee and the city.
And, and this pension plan was funded by whom?
The city and the employee.
So there's not a distinguishing.
Other than just how much the contribution rates would have been.
And what's the mandatory, what, what's the retirement minimum years of service for public safety employees in the state retirement system?
Well.
Or here to four, anyway.
Yeah.
We're not sure.
Well, again, I think it also used to be 20, but they've changed that in recent years to somewhat longer. Police, you have a police officer, he probably could tell you quicker than I could.
But at, at the time, when the option to go to state retirement was there, it was 20 years each way.
I think it was 20. I think it was also 20.
Okay.
That only changed in recent years.
Okay.
Yes. In the fall of 2008, it went to 25 for hazardous duty, and for non-hazardous duty, it's 27.
So there's a certain amount that the city puts into, in there each year as well?
Yes.
About 37% of gross salary.
Yeah, that range, yes, yes.
And are they giving cost of living raises? I'm assuming.
You're talking about the ones that are retired at the state. Until recent years at the state, they were given, I think it was an automatic percentage, I don't know what it was, but with recent pension legislation, that has been stopped. So that's not automatic anymore. It's not to say that the state can't give them a COLA if they want to, but they, I don't.
I believe it was occurring pretty regularly up until about a couple of years ago.
Yes.
When the legislation was introduced.
Changed it.
On the state pension system, people realized we've got a crisis we need to.
Yeah. The way it used to be was legislatively, they automatically got a COLA, and the only way to stop it would be if they would vote to not allow it. Now it's the other way around. They don't get one unless they vote to give them one.
The legislature?
Yes.
And so they haven't, in the last couple of years, gotten one?
That's correct. That's correct.
So which pension fund is in the best shape?
Oh, that's a tricky question.
Sorry.
I need to make a correction in my memo if it's appropriate to do that at this time. I just noticed this regretfully in the memo associated with this item where we recommend the means to do this if you decide to. With the recent refunding of the pension bond that was alluded to earlier, the city will realize a net savings in interest and expense over the life of the issue of $365,000. Unfortunately, this memo said $265,000, and it repeats that again under the recommendation. So as far as the means that we would recommend for this, it would be to draw from that obligation that was otherwise built in to the budget at 2% or $212,000. That would constitute about 60% of the savings that would be reallocated in this direction.
But that savings is not an automatic amount that comes in? That savings is.
It's a reduction to interest costs.
Is spread out over many years.
Yes, so we have, find the cash first.
So it doesn't, we don't get $365,000 and we're going to spend that much? It's spent, it's over the.
It's, it's over the remaining life of the, of the bond issue. It's a, it's a net reduction in interest costs over that period of time of $365,000. So we first would need to find the cash and then allow it to be replenished through the savings.
And it would not, you said 2% in this would be $212,000, so if we did a 1%?
Should be half of that, John? Yeah, yeah.
And is it just the one time? It would not obligate us, and next year it's not, 106 or 212 is not added on to the amount?
That is absolutely correct. You do not have that obligation. And again, it's been a number of years since the city did this, and in any conversations that we've had with leadership of the pension fund, it's like if it happens, it, don't expect it will become a regular thing. Clearly, that, that's been made known. That's, that's well understood.
So if we were to adjust to 1%, what would, what would be required for that?
Madam Clerk, still indicate?
Do we need to amend the ordinance to change it from 2% to 1%? And vote on the amendment?
When we vote on it, that's what we would do?
Yes.
Okay.
So introduce an amendment at that time to amend it from what's in the proposed ordinance to whatever you'd like, and then vote on it.
Okay. Any other questions? Mr. Abraham, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with the Luther F. Carson Full River Center, Inc. for specific services. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the mayor is hereby authorized to execute a contract with the Luther F. Carson Full River Center, Inc. in the amount of $80,240 to provide an extensive youth performance schedule and continuing with their tradition of the Class Act series. This contract shall expire June 30, 2015.
Second.
Madam Mayor, may I make a comment? As you might have noticed, these contracts are coming at you somewhat sporadically, as I have time to review them all, which isn't unusual, quite frankly. But I call your attention to something in those, as, as we have reviewed those subsequent to recent discussions about contracts and what we need in them and accountability and all that sort of thing. I believe it's fair to say that annual audits have been required of the agencies to whom the, the monies are directed pretty consistently. We've added a clause, and you would see that in, in both this one and the one that's on the agenda next, that there also be a, a financial report outside of the audit given to us at the end of the year specifically showing how the monies were spent. And we do identify in the front of these contracts, as you can see, what activities we're asking to be conducted in return for the contributions. So we're simply, this year, asking that there be a, a financial report given to us in addition to the audit that states it in financial numbers, the expenditure funds for those purposes.
And I do believe that's a reasonable request.
Good.
Mr. Rhodes, please.
All right. It's shorter. I move the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with Paducah Symphony Orchestra for specific services. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the mayor is hereby authorized to execute a contract with Paducah Symphony Orchestra in the amount of $22,855 for specific services. This contract shall expire June 30, 2015.
Second.
City managers' report.
Just one thing, well, mention a couple of things, the staff level going on. We have at the staff level met to take a look at the recommendations that Mr. Speck met when he was here, and we're formulating a group of items to bring forward to you in a workshop. Thought possibly we could do that next Tuesday. I don't know that we'll be ready, so it may be the next workshop date with, with some items that we'd like to bring before you for discussion and, and possible direction on. Work continues, and we had a conference call today with the state on a prospective grant that sort of came out of the blue, that might provide some resources for the development of Schultz Park, what has been known as Phase One. It's been, the plan's been around for a while, but has been sitting idle with no known source of funding until this came along. So it looks like, it's likely we'll have an eligible project that would have to do with primarily, I think, a roadway improvement through there and also any number of ancillary items that would accompany that. So expect that within the next couple of weeks ahead of the time when a formal request would be made of you to submit the grant, that we would also come forward with some information on that to share and, and get direction on how you would like that project to be submitted for funding. But it's very encouraging that there's a, looks like a fairly promising source of grant funds on the state level for that project. And of course, that's a kind of a critical link between where we are improving now with the riverfront and improvements that await between the riverfront and the convention center, and then, of course, moving back in the other direction. There is a need to upgrade the infrastructure there, and I think some of the ancillary things. And, and so that has been known, again, as, as Phase One Schultz Park improvements, and it looks like it's finding some perspective life in terms of a, of a funding source to move forward with it. So we're excited about that. I think that's all I have.
We had our trip to, we haven't talked about our trip to Oak Ridge.
Oh, right.
And so we, Commissioner Wilson, city manager, and I, along with some other members of the community, traveled to Oak Ridge, Tennessee, and had a tour of the Circle of Cell and the Y, what's Y-25?
Mm-hmm.
Facilities. Was very informative, some of the decisions that we're going to have to look at here as a community. So it was good to see their facility and talk with their city, was their city manager there? He wasn't, he wasn't.
No, he was, he was planning an exchange trip to India, so he couldn't make it. I have to follow up on that.
Mayor Behan was there, along with the gentleman from the state.
Right, the environmental cabinet?
Yes.
The chamber?
So it was a very informative meeting.
And also the Department of Energy had representatives there with us.
So, very informative, and we'll be having more discussions and probably some more visits to some of those facilities as well with other community leaders. Any commissioners' comments?
No, just that some residents may not understand exactly what that Circle of Cell is. So Senator, do you want to just kind of?
Well, essentially, it would be a, a landfill that would be designed to meet the requirements of, of burial, if you will, of demolition material from building demolition at the, at the site. A lot that goes into that, and at some point, we, and I know the CAB is, is going to be bringing a lot of information forward, but the design of that cell, it's a multi-layer thing, obviously, multi-tier with different types of materials, everything from recompacted clay to membrane to a couple other composites in there. One, I can't even describe, it was a very hard rubber thing. It wasn't the membrane, it was something in addition to that. So it's, it's a multi-layer system that I believe, in the words of the fellow from the Energy Department, the state of Tennessee, represents the best technology known to man to accomplish what it needs to accomplish, and that's essentially groundwater protection or any kind of contamination leaking out from that. So, and, and that's just the design. Then there's the whole process of, of putting material in the landfill, every, everything from how it's entombed before it's even put in there to how it's monitored post-buryal, the, the records that are kept, the, the long-term responsibility for any additional maintenance of the facility. It's a very, very, very involved process. It makes municipal solid waste management seem relatively easy by comparison, but.
When he says CAB, there are a couple of terms people may not be familiar with. That's the Citizens Advisory Board that the community has, that works with the Department of Energy to advise them on things that we would have going on here. Of course, the DOE has selected FLOR as the contractor for the DND at the plant. We actually saw buildings being torn down, demolished there that would go into the landfill. We saw the road that where they took everything from the site to that Circle of Cell location. A lot of things that would be going on here, some buildings that had been renovated and turned over to their CROW, much like what we have with our PACCROW here. They call it CROWET for East Tennessee. So there are a lot of decisions I think our community will be making and cooperating with, and one thing they did talk about also is their presence in DC, and for their presence with their congressional delegation to make sure they continue to get their funding, just like what we do here, fighting to try to get the funding for the cleanup in Paducah.
And Oak Ridge has been at this a lot longer. I mean, we're the newbie on the block, so to speak, being the last facility to be shut down.
But they were very open with us, very welcoming to tell us anything that we needed. They showed us all around, so I thought it was very informative.
Public comments, we have Mr. Ward here tonight to speak on Paducah Power and others.
Thank you, I'm glad you could.
Sure.
The first thing I wanted to bring up, when I went to the, I think you've been, did you go to one of the board meetings for Paducah Power, I saw in the paper?
Yes.
Yeah.
The last one.
I went to one before that. And when they brought up about, that their example had been, it was one of the boards, I don't remember which one it was, it was with Mr. Peterson, that Owensboro Municipal Power was who they sort of emulated with the idea of going to the power divisions for their cells. I think it was one of the directors said that. Well, since then, I've done some checking, and it looks like they, Owensboro Municipal Power, they published their annual report, which I've got a copy of it right here. It looks like you all, as the board who appoint, the city council who appoints the board of Paducah Power, ought to require them to produce their annual report, just like Owensboro is doing. They say that, you know, they use Owensboro as a guideline when they, that's what they told me at the meeting.
Do we? Publish it on the internet.
That what you're saying?
Probably, I can't find anywhere where the Paducah Power annual report's published.
Well, I think that's what he suggested.
And it should be published?
I mean, they owe.
Well, if it isn't, absolutely.
I mean, they owe, not only are they paying for power that's been produced, and they're having to turn around and go back on the open market, and they owe like $600 million and over $100 million out there on that plant on Sider Road that was disset there. I mean, that's why, though, from the papers said, you know, Paducah's lost population since 1960 at 34,000. They compared it to Owensboro, at the same time had 33, now that Owensboro's got 57,765, now we've got all over 25,000. I mean, the power situation with everything else going, and Paducah is just going to exaggerate the decline of Paducah's population, which they said it's predicted to decline either way between now and 2025. So it looks like you all, as a city council who appoints the board of Paducah Power, could do something to make them release their records so at least us as a citizen to have to buy our power from them know what's going on.
Well, if they don't have their annual report on the internet, we'll certainly make sure that it is up.
Okay. And then the other thing I wanted to bring, one other thing I wanted to bring up is about Owensboro, I just went to Owensboro. And I mean, what are you all going to do about the hotel down there that Mr. Speck you had in town? Didn't, wasn't he here about the walkability of Paducah? Okay. Well, if you look at that hotel right down there, it's six blocks from downtown. And if you talk about walkability, there is no walkability. It's in a commercial district. All the sidewalks back to downtown are very narrow, not in very good shape. It looks like if you were going to look at the future of that area, you should make it a lot easier, but people are going to have to walk back downtown if they're going to help downtown Paducah in that hotel.
We're very much tuned in to that, both on the street side and also behind the flood wall. As you know, there's that big area back there. We are currently engaged in a planning process to transform that from what it is now to something that, among other things, makes for a good passageway between the hotel and the downtown area, either through automobile, foot, or bicycle.
Is that part of that Schultz Park Ranch you may get?
Well, not exactly, but it's a, it's a link to it, that this is from Schultz Park towards the convention center.
What's the timeline on that?
Well, we would like to have something in place, at least at a first stage of it, on or before the opening of the hotel. So we have a little bit of time, but not a lot.
Well, yeah.
But a point well raised, and then I think we're all cognizant of that.
And any other other thing is about the city hall, which I know that's all up in the air, but as I said out there in my car waiting, this is one of the prettiest areas in Paducah, the city hall here, with the trees. There's very little greenery downtown, except right in this part of town right here. The rest of it is just parking lots. I mean, I don't know what you're going to do with the city hall, but if you are, I know you all have always been going out of town to a lot of areas. And if you want to look at a beautiful city hall, you can look it up on, there's City Park, you know, just built a new city hall.
Mm-hmm.
Beautiful city hall, and I know some of the figures y'all found in the papers, like 14, 15 million dollars. And they just built it, you can look it up on the website, they just built it, they just moved in over the weekend, they just built a new city hall for $8.2 million.
Yeah, the, the figure of 14 or 15 has never been suggested here for a new build. That is a figure that our consultants have suggested might be required to do a total renovation of the existing facility. So odd as it might seem, it would appear, based on information we have now, that it would be more costly to do an entire renovation of this current facility to make it functional for the next five years than what it might be to build new.
Will it be become, just tear it down?
That's a decision that remains to be made.
Well, I know y'all said there's something with the, there's a problem with your heating and cooling, but I know I was down here in March and it was cold out, and it's warm in here. It's 100 degrees outside now, pushing it, and it's comfortable.
It's inefficient, I can tell, it's very, very costly.
Okay, thank you all.
Thank you, we appreciate your comments.
Okay.
We don't have an executive session tonight, so meetings adjourned.